Please rise for the pledge.
No, no, there's no more one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the March 1st Post Falls City Council meeting. Clerk will note that our council members are present. We do have some announcements, but first, I would like to welcome some special visitors. This is Cub Scout Troop 401 from all the way across the state line from Liberty Lake, Washington, so thank you gentlemen for joining us tonight. Announcements, the American Legion is seeking nomination for Veteran of the Year for the Post Falls area. The award will be presented on Friday, March 18th, at the annual Post 143 American Legion Birthday Banquet. Deadline for nominations is March 10th. For more information on the nomination process or attending the banquet, please call the American Legion at 773-9054. The Idaho Presidential Primary Election is Tuesday, March 8th. For information on voting, visit the Cootney County election website, www.kc.gov.us/elections. Daylight savings time starts on Sunday, March 13th at 2:00 a.m.
Oh wow.
Hard to believe. Don't forget to set your clocks ahead by one hour. This is a reminder that the 20th anniversary of Weinstein &amp; Dine is this Saturday, March 5th. The Post Falls Education Foundation has been providing teaching grants for innovative classroom education for the past 19 years and has raised over $500,000 for the teachers and students. There is still time to purchase your tickets and support a great cause, and you know, for many years I was involved in that, but I got off the committee, and thank goodness there are people like Loretta Reed and Val Wilcox that have continued and everybody else who has jumped in, because I know those two ladies, I think, have been involved since day one and do a tremendous job raising money for, to assist our teachers with grant requests. Tonight, we do have some appointments for the Building Code Board of Appeals. We've talked about this over the last few weeks, and I think that we, the actual Board of Appeals had their first meeting in 20 years, 10 years, last week, so it's, the committee meets very seldom.
Yes.
But, based on presentation we heard from staff, we need to have some new appointments, and all of these positions have to meet certain criteria, and so the information brought forward, and I believe you all received information on the applicants or the folks who have applied. So tonight, I would like to bring forward for council confirmation, Ed Wagner to a five-year term, Mark Latham to a five-year term, Rick Schmidt to a four-year term, Lloyd Dresser to a four-year term, Dara Wilder to a three-year term, Bill Miller for a three-year term, and Louis Bustamante for a two-year term. And just so you know, we visited with legal counsel to make sure that having members of the Planning and Zoning Commission does not cause any kind of a conflict of interest or violation. It's actually thought having members on the P&amp;Z, also on this committee, would help in the running of a meeting should it need to be convened again, so if you had any questions on that, Warren has provided the information. So with that, I would ask for a confirmation motion.
I'd make a motion that we confirm all of the candidates presented for appointment.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Jeanne, Shannon, please take the roll.
Henderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Thanks for your work on getting those together, and I know P&amp;Z, our planning department had some input on that too, so thank you very much. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
We have none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict? Seeing them, would you present the consent calendar, please?
Item A is minutes from the February 16th, 2016 city council meeting. Item B is payables February 9th through February 22nd, 2016. Item C is Aspenwood subdivision master development agreement, addendum extension number six, file number S-06-14. Item D is agreement for consultant services with EV engineers for biological phosphorus removal troubleshooting and optimization assistance. Item E is police department purchase of a 2016 Ford SUV for the K-9 unit. And item F is the police department purchase of 2016 Nissan Frontier 4x4 trucks for the animal safety unit.
Any questions on the consent calendar?
I have a quick question. The new SUV for K-9, was that made possible by that gentleman's bequeathment?
Actually, the church.
The church.
Yeah, that was made possible by the church, the donation that we got from the church.
What was the church, do you remember? I'm sorry, Scott.
Right off the top of my head, I don't.
Well, thank them again.
I can't remember either, sorry.
First Christian Church.
Yeah, I think it was First Christian Church, yep, I think you're right.
Looking at the memo.
Yep.
What a great guy.
Yeah, I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're following through with that.
Yeah, when they made that donation, that was one of the requests that they had, is that it go to the K-9 unit and ask how we could best use that money, and we felt a vehicle would be appropriate, so.
I have a question for the chief, too. On item F, the, the two new trucks for the animal safety unit, that's made possible by the, the...
By the other donation that we got.
The other donation.
Yes, absolutely, and I don't remember that name either, and I should.
Yeah.
Yeah, Wetzel, Whitesel, yes.
I was curious, you said that in the memo, that the existing trucks would be sold at auction? Is the money from the, the auction going to go back into that? Where's that money gonna go?
When we sell vehicles after they're retired, that money comes back and goes into the general fund. I think it actually goes into the vehicle replacement fund.
It does.
We use that to be able to purchase new vehicles, so it wouldn't go directly to help purchase these two vehicles, but it would go to help purchase future vehicles. We don't get a whole lot of money out of retired vehicles. I think of our patrol cars, when they go to auction, we get between $500 and $700 for them, so we don't get a whole lot. We, we use them to the full possibility of life.
Wear them out.
We do.
Any other questions?
Oh, I did have one other question. Oh, on item C, not for the chief.
I think you're beating me to this one.
What's that?
I think you're beating me to this one.
That's hot, too.
On the Aspenwood subdivision, it's been extended numerous times. I'm curious why we keep extending that, and if there, is there a reason why we have a...
They have made a request to extend it, so the applicant has made a request for the city to extend it.
I understand that. I'm wondering, why do we have extensions versus just leaving it open-ended?
And Warren can speak to that.
So, the way our code is written, prior to the expiration of the approval, they can ask staff for an extension at that point. Once the approval has lapsed, they have to ask the council for an extension, so that's why it's before you on the agenda tonight. What staff typically looks at when they're considering it is essentially, has there been any changes in the code since it was adopted? In other words, if somebody came in and asked for the same approval tonight that they asked for four years ago, six years ago, have the rules changed in that period of time that would render a different result? Here, there's not really been any changes. They're proposing building essentially the exact same thing, so that's, that's the gist of the request for tonight, is for council to authorize the extension or not.
Okay, the second part of that would be, why like one year? Why don't we look at it and say, you know what, we don't really see anything that's substantially gonna change in the next three years, so let's make it three years, so you don't have to come back again in September?
I, probably not the person to speak to, my understanding is that's sort of been the past practice. I do think we're gonna have a code amendment that's gonna address this process a little bit, clean it up, so that there's a little more clarity as to how this is supposed to function. Planning staff, I believe, is working on that.
Okay, I guess I'm just trying to make it easier on the applicant not to have to come back over and over and over again.
Sure.
And can I follow up on that?
Sure.
It seems to me that several months ago, we had one, and perhaps it was because that particular plan had already expired, but it seemed like they had come back two or three times, but it had expired, and several months down the road, they came back and asked to have it extended, and we said, no, you've gotta bring it back. And I don't know if it was because it had expired, or because plans had changed, et cetera, but I think if you come up with a ordinance amendment, a code amendment, I think that could help identify or address all those issues.
And John and Russ are working on that.
Yeah.
Good, I'm done.
Your question, though?
I did, yeah.
With that, seeing no more questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Let's move for approval of consent calendar.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion, or, yeah, further discussion. Seeing them, Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Abstaining from item A and vote to approve the rest.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much.
Tonight, we do have one public hearing, it is the Beck Road Vacation, and I apologize, I should have announced, if anybody wishes to speak, there's forms on the ideas in the back, please fill them out and turn them in to our clerk. And with that, Mr. Manley, I will open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, introducing the Beck Road Vacation, the file number BC16-01. The, this is an interesting situation, I'll put it here on the overhead. Sorry, I'm used to going to the computer. So, November of 2015, the Beck Road Vacation was heard before you, the applicant was present, and we followed the procedural process where I do the intro, and then we have the applicant come up, and then we do a staff report and conclusion. This evening, the applicant's not present, because what's being requested is more or less cleanup from a decision that was already rendered last November. So what I'll be presenting is the intro and staff report. So, right here in the blue checkerboard, this area was vacated in 2015, and part of that was, the intent was, where you see here with the hatch in the block triangle area, that was also to be included for that entire other route off Beck Road to be vacated, to make the north-south, the current alignment of Beck Road, be a little more clean. So, with this little triangular, there was some omission of legals, so tonight, it's just a technicality of request to vacate that little triangle area and make it consistent. That's really all I have.
Is that your staff report as well, John?
Yes, yes.
Any questions, John?
I see on the application, the applicant paid a $1,000 application fee, did we charge him again for the little tiny piece that we're fixing tonight?
To be honest with you, I didn't follow up on the, the bookkeeping of that, to find out the fees, potentially. Okay, no, they didn't, I just been confirmed.
I would hope that we didn't.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions, John?
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
And the applicant won't be speaking?
No.
So, is there anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
You're not going to rebut, I would assume?
No.
I will close the public hearing. Counsel deliberation.
Sorry, I think it's stuck in my throat.
I think it's pretty clear and concise, and if everybody's ready, I'll make a motion. I would move to approve the Beck Road Vacation, file number VAC-16-01.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. We would really love it if public hearings could all move that quick, and just thought I'd throw that out there for you.
Perfect, sounds good.
Next item of business is unfinished business, we have none. Next up is citizens' issues, this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. If you care to speak, come forward, and we'll have you give us your name, and we'll allow you five minutes to speak. Mr. Flowers, Bob warned me that he was gonna talk, so I knew that I could look and call him.
Bob Flowers, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I first would like to thank the city of Post Falls for all their help in trying to get a meeting with the Avista company. Last week, your city manager and your road manager and myself were sitting in a conference room at the agreed-upon time to meet with Avista. In fact, we even adjusted that time so it would fit their schedule, and we sat there for better than 15 minutes, twiddling our thumbs, and then finally, they sent a email, they didn't bother to call anybody, sent an email and said, oh, the dates won't work for them, 15 minutes after the meeting was supposed to start. But like I said, I'd like to thank the city because they were a lot of help in at least setting up this meeting. Unfortunately, Avista and all their arrogance chose not to attend. I would like to bring the city's attention to ordinance number 1015. This is the franchise agreement between the city of Post Falls and Avista for their gas lines. It basically states in here, in pretty straight terms, that the Avista has the right to do the maintenance and the replacements of their lines, but the one thing that they forgot was that they're also supposed, also supposed to return the streets to the city in the same condition that they found them, which they have not. And by tearing up our streets and leaving them in the condition that they have, they have potentially made it to, well, it would possibly cost the citizens of Post Falls quite a lot of money. And if Avista is not willing to repair our streets, in this, return them to us in the same manner that they received them, then I suggest that the city should try to, to enforce this ordinance. And if they can't enforce this ordinance, there's a very nice little clause, Section 12 of City Ordinance 1015. It says, "For in consideration of rights privileges set forth hereon, guarantee as consideration therefore in lieu of other city fees granted, or, hereon granted, operating revenue which is hereby defined to mean all amounts of money which the guarantee which is Avista billed for sales, transmission, and/or distribution, less uncollectibles of gas service within the city, they shall pay a quarterly sum equal to 1% of the previous quarter's gross operating revenue." Well, the city has a very nice clause in here, "The city shall have the option to adjust fees annually according to applicable laws and consistent with the procedures thereto. If Avista fails to pay the franchise fees to the city within 30 days at the end of each calendar quarter, Avista shall pay a penalty in the amount of 5% of the amount due." Well, I'm basically suggesting, if Avista won't pay to repair our streets the way they should, the way that this ordinance says they should, then maybe the city should go after them and, and get the money in another way, because they are so arrogant, they don't even bother, they leave city officials sitting, twiddling their thumbs while they do whatever they gotta do, and to me, this is unacceptable. And I'd like to see the, Mr. Mayor, I ask you respectfully and the council to either declare them in violation of City Ordinance 1015, or come up with a way for them to actually pay to repair our streets. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate you, your interest in it and following up. Anybody else wishing to address council? Next item up is new business, we have none, followed by ordinances and resolution, and we do have one ordinance on the Title 18A Amendment.
Move to place the ordinance Title 18A Amendment on the first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mr. Wilson.
An ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Post Falls, Cootney County, Idaho, repealing municipal code sections 18A-08-020, 18A-08-030, and 18A-08-040, adopting a new municipal code section 18A-08-020, amending municipal code sections 18A-04-020, 04-040, 04-050, 04-060, 04-070, 08, 110, 08, 020, 12, 010, 12-090, 16-010, and 28-010, to make smart code zoning discretionary upon annexation, to reassign certain duties of the Development Review Committee to the zoning administrator, to allow for variances for rear alleys and lanes, to require phasing plans as part of a neighborhood plan, to provide for amendments to neighborhood plans, to require public hearings to comply with adopted hearing procedures, to provide for visibility triangle standards, to amend the information required on applications and adopting new definitions, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing for the publication of this ordinance by summary, providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance Title 18A Amendment and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion?
Should we have Warren read that again?
I was just going to suggest that, aren't we happy that it is, you know, by title only? So, thank you, Warren. Motion second, further discussion? Seeing them, Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Administrative and staff reports, excuse me, Mr. Melvin, update on Greens Ferry and Seltice intersection traffic.
Mayor Jacobson, City Council, at the last council meeting, you'd requested that we return with an update on the striping and signage that was causing confusion at the Seltice and Greens Ferry intersection. Since that, we've done three things. First of all, we spoke with Urban Rural Agency and encouraged them to have their contractor excel the striping that was needed out there. Fortunately, we had some great weather last week, the contractor got out there and, and completed the majority of striping on that. We believe that has helped, however, I think we're still seeing some confusion from the drivers that are out there. We, we checked with the police department, we currently are not having, we haven't had any accidents since it's been open, but I think that with the driver confusion and the near misses that we're seeing, we still have a safety concern that we believe ought to be addressed. So the next item that we did was we reviewed the intersection relative to the plans that were approved by the urban, by us, by the city as part of the Urban Rural Agency project for additional signage and striping that could help clarify the situation out there, and we believe with the installation of a few overhead signs, with overhead signs indicating the lane movements, as well as some additional striping, will really help clarify that. Pretty, pretty minor costs associated with that. I've talked to our street superintendent, he believes he could get the majority of that work done within a couple of weeks, material costs are probably a few thousand dollars out of our budget. We have dollars within our transportation impact fees that are, would be specifically used for that, that are, that are very clear and specific, that we could use for that project. There's, there's really not action, the dollars amount that we have of a couple thousand dollars is something that the department head can authorize, there isn't really action that would need to be done by us. Once we were, once we're complete, we would however, speak with Urban Rural Agency to see if they would, would wanna cost share with us on this project, so that's where we're at, and that's our, our path forward, so if there's, if there's any questions...
Bill, I'd just share, and I'll ask Mr. Borders to jump in if he cares to. We had our meeting with Urban Renewal this morning, three-on-three, and that came up, the discussion, and I know in talking with Urban Renewal, we said that we wanted city, city engineering to look at it too, and have you work with the agency's engineering, just make sure that whatever we do eliminates confusion and increases the safety, and I know Shelley and I had mentioned that if signage is an issue, and you know, we've got the ability to make the signs, we'll do what we need to do, but just make sure everybody's on board to eliminate the confusion. I know Mr. Borders saw, had some specific issues, and I'm thinking they're probably gonna be addressed.
Yeah. I'm sure they will be, so...
Yeah, so, the, the problems that we've, that we would have had to date, have, would have been maybe not real severe collisions, but the weather's getting nicer, we're having motorcyclists out on the road, and, and so those collisions and those accidents will become a lot more severe if they do occur, so...
We appreciate it.
Safety's number one.
You and your department are working with the agency and Mr. Lane, and just make sure that it's all done right.
Great, thank you.
Any questions, Bill? Joe?
I was just saying, you say there have been no collisions?
That, it, since, since the, the overpass has opened up, the police report that we got is that there has been no collisions.
I've personally seen two, so...
I would say there's, there's been at least two there, so I don't know.
We, we got a report today that, that showed from like the first of December until today, that there weren't any, so I don't, I'm not sure.
We have had a couple there, I don't know what happened with the report, but I would say that those were not related to the intersection, those were just people speeding and driving inappropriately, so it had nothing to do with the striping.
Got it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Well, I will say, what a difference that makes, two weeks ago, when I was down there, and there was no car in front of me parked to go onto Seltice, so I didn't really know where to go, and if there's already a car there, you're okay, but I'll tell you what a difference it makes. Now, it's not dangerous at all, it's just perfect.
Good, thank you, that's good to hear, so...
Thank you very much.
Great, thanks.
Mayor comments, that was your only staff report, I believe, correct?
That is correct.
On behalf of myself and the council, I'd like to congratulate the Post Falls High School Wrestling Team and Coach Reardon, the state 5A wrestling champions. It was great that so many in the community were there to welcome them home, and I believe, and I know Counselor Thorson attends a lot of these, that over the last few years, we've had several state championship teams, and the people that come out and greet the, the student athletes when they come back is, is wonderful, so I appreciate everybody that showed up to welcome them home. I want, and also PD Department escort, so thank you very much, Chief. I want to congratulate Coach Pete Reardon on the team's back-to-back state titles, also a great win for Elias De La Rosa, who won his fourth state title. Now, that's not too bad for a kid that's in school for four years, that's, I think, I'm not sure, but I think it's a pretty good percentage. And it's the first four-time state champion in school history. Ridge Lovett, Matt McLeod, and Tyler Wolf also won titles for Post Falls. Other team members placing for Post Falls were Jordan Grimm, Mathias De La Rosa, Braden Huber, Jason Burchell, I probably will butcher this, and I apologize, Kwong Ram Smith, Brad Noson, Alessio Lemon, and Wyatt Shelley. So congratulations to the Post Falls Wrestling Team. Also, there was an article in the paper today, another Post Falls state championship team was the Dance and Cheer Squad, and I know the Post Falls team came in first in three or four different categories, I think, so congratulations to those student athletes, and also to those that chaperone and escort and teach and coach, it's, it's a big effort, we appreciate all they do to help our kids. The city budget book has received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, GFOA. The budget book presents the city's adopted annual budget, lists priorities, goals, and challenges. The award is given for meeting GFOA's high reporting standards and demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate the city's financial story to its citizens. All three of our annual financial reports, the CAFER, PAFER, and Budget Book have received GFOA awards. Budget Book is available on the city's website, postfallsidaho.org. Congratulations to Finance Director Jason Faulkner and Accounting Supervisor Randy Bain on this achievement, so the, the goal is, the bar's been set high and you continue to hit it, so thank you very much. The city of Post Falls also received the Legacy of Leaves Award from the Idaho Nursery and Landscape Association. The award is presented annually to the city with the best Arbor Day celebration using Idaho Department of Land's Arbor Day grant funds. City urban forester Preston Hill accepted this award. The city receives, received the award for its annual tree giveaway. This past year, over 3,500 bare root trees and shrubs were given to more than 1,000 homeowners using a $300 grant from the Department of Lands and a very generous donation from an anonymous donor. The donated trees, planting supplies... The donated trees, planting supplies, volunteer time, and labor resulted in a project value of $49,500. The annual tree giveaway is in its 11th year, and more than 30,000 trees and shrubs have been planted in Post Falls. It's an amazing number. Congratulations Preston and the urban forestry assist, and urban forestry assistant Nina Eckberg. So, Dave, please pass on our thanks to all those folks who do such a nice job. As everybody's probably seen, I mean, I'm getting emails from my kids who don't even leave in town, live in town, about the amazing video on the police department Facebook page and Officer Coons for, and I talked to Chief a little bit, it says he talked him out of committing suicide, and it looked like he helped him not commit suicide. But Chief, great effort on the police department's part. You know, we've come to expect it, and I think as a result, we get spoiled, but please know and let your folks know how much we appreciate all they do for us. It's just another great example. This morning, we, or this afternoon, rather, I attended a joint powers meeting with Mr. Fair, and it was on the Centennial Trail, Joint Powers of the city of Post Falls, city of Coeur d'Alene, and Cootney County. They've had a project, maintenance project they've been planning for almost 26 years, and it is the bridge going over the river out at State Line. And each year, the city contributes, I don't know, I think it's $7,500 a year for the Centennial Trail. City Coeur d'Alene does the same, the county does the same, and over the years, it has built. They now have the funds, excess funds, actually, and so they asked the Joint Powers to approve them moving forward, soliciting bids to maintain that bridge. It needs, paint is chipped, it's, paint is cracking, et cetera, et cetera. Nothing's been done since it opened. That's a bridge that was used by the railroad, I believe they said, for over 100 years. Construction company was going to buy that so they could use it to get their trucks back and forth, and one of our former senators, and I forgot his name, Senator Craig, thank you, stepped up and helped us, helped the Centennial Trail Foundation purchase that bridge, and that's the link between Idaho and Washington. So, just wanna let you know that they will be renovating that, so as you're heading across, especially eastbound, out by State Line, over the next several months, you'll see the bridge, which will be freshly painted with a nice Centennial Trail sign on the side of it. So, very short meeting, money was there, it was a pretty easy decision, so appreciate that. Lastly, on my part, you know, I just, on a personal, wanna thank staff. I had the opportunity to have lunch with Mayor David Condon out of Spokane, and his legislative affairs person, of course, the city of Spokane operates different than we do. Their mayor does not go to city council meetings, they have, he has his legislative person go, and the city council president runs the meetings. And as you know, you read in the paper that it's not always a lovable situation, there's a lot of acrimony. And in meeting with Mayor Condon, who I have a lot of respect for, he asked me, he says, what are the top issues that you and the council are getting beat up on in the city of Post Falls? And I got to look at him and say, nothing. You know, I mean, there, people are always gonna have issues. People ask for things, and the staff has always stepped up, and they make our job easy, and from the mayor's seat, what you folks do as a council, and the support you show to myself and to the staff and the citizens, i- is tremendous. And for me to be able to sit down with another mayor and listen to him, just ask the question as to, you know, what our biggest negative issues are, and really having to think and not being able to come up with anything that hasn't been addressed, I'm sure we'll have issues arise. But again, I just, from, from my, my seat, wanna thank you for all you do. You really do make our job much easier to do, and the service we provide our citizens, I think, is excellent, so thank you very much. Counsel comments.
Can I echo?
Absolutely.
And over the weekend, without mentioning any names, but over the weekend, seeing an issue that a local business had resolved, and I had a citizen bring something up to me, didn't wanna, you know, make any kind of report, and Chief Hoag was able to, you know, within 24 hours, so I agree, it's not that we don't have issues, or the citizens don't sometimes have a problem with the way that we do things. They are resolved, and I think citizens, on the, for the most part, feel they can come and speak at a meeting, you know, they're, they're welcome to do that, but the, the responsiveness of the staff in its entirety makes our job easy. So, thank you also.
I had one thing, I did want to acknowledge our local community college, NIC basketball men's team, won the Scenic West this year, the last year they'll be in the league, with a perfect 30-0 record, so they will probably be playing in the national tournament coming up here in a few weeks.
I was talking with Mr. Borders, we think maybe that loss in the tournament may help them. It may tweak their attention a little bit.
We're hoping, yeah.
Anybody else? We do not need an executive session?
Not.
Thank you very much. The next meeting is?
Our adjourned.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You need adjourned, thank you very much.